Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 17th. We'd like to welcome everyone to our work session. Board members who are present in the boardroom are Members Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Donley, and Bellamy. Let's see, Member Wilson is online. And we have Dr. Bishop, as well as incoming superintendent and staff. Welcome, Dr. Bryant. Welcome to Ankrit. And of course, as always, we do welcome our staff, our hardworking staff. So thank you, guys. Alrighty, so we're gonna proceed with items on our agenda. We only have two items, actually. And one of them is our board request for information. There aren't any requests that we have not filled. I would just like to remind our board members, if you have requests, please email them to Katie so that she can get your language directly. And we can put that on the list for our next meeting. And so that brings us to item C on our agenda, and that is reading proficiency, our monitoring, outcome monitoring report. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to share my appreciation to the board again for, let me turn on my monitor here, for allowing us to give this at a later date. The actual assessment window ended on Friday, and they captured the data, plugged it in yesterday. We had the review of it today, and you have it presented. So moving forward, next board meeting as well in June, I am certainly welcome to any questions that we might have. Because I know that generally, it's given two weeks to kind of sit on, look at. So I'll take my time through the actual report. And then, I know the discussion will be lively today, but then, as things come to your thoughts, please share those, because we want to get them answered. So this is our second outcome monitoring for reading that we've done in the district. We presented data on student learning prior to this time. Now, to start, just as a review, the reading proficiency goal that the board set was a lofty goal. And we had shared this before, because there has been some criticism. And we like to use the term criticism in that, you know, that's just too much, that's so much. But understanding as educators that we do know that the mother of all comprehension is reading, no matter what subject you're going to learn, it is reading that is core to that. And so for us, for our children to continue learning, it was a deliberate move. It doesn't mean that math is less important, because remember, math didn't have such a lofty goal. It just means how much importance we're putting on beginning literacy. So the interim goal to look at that, if we want by third grade students comprehension, and this year, they took the STAR, A.K. STAR. So we will update that once we get that written for next year. We didn't change the board goal. Remember, the assessment changed. So we'll get that updated. But our students this spring took the A.K. STAR. Now, understanding for a student to be proficient by third grade, there are building blocks of necessary learning prior to that time. And these aren't feelings about how we think kids should learn. They're absolute, research-based, scientific evidence, brain research steps, how people learn to read. And so we are going to measure those. And those are found in our K-2 students prior to getting to the third grade. And we look at interim assessments to see how we're doing. And it's a curriculum-based measure, which means you're actually using curriculum to, of what kids are supposed to learn, to assess them on it. So if we want them to know their sounds and their letter naming, we assess them with sounds and letter naming. That's how curriculum-based measures were founded. So our goal was to increase from 37.5 to that 80%. Because again, these are discrete, independent skills that kids learn, like letter naming, letter sounds, letter blending. Those are the types of building blocks that we need. And if we think about those, we want a bar that kids can reach, that they either can do it or not. And so although we are looking at growth and where learning's happening, these are skills that are criterion-based. Like, we need to know, these are the criteria in which they need to learn. So that's just a background. So going to our first graph, this is just demonstrating where we want to go. And my assessment, the goal again, and my assessment is that we are far below target ending this year. And I share this assessment given the student learning that is captured this spring. And these are in our K-2 students. So we do not even have the state assessment returned. But in the learning that occurred this year, we are not where we need to be. And I do want to share once again, and I'll share it in future slides as well, that what we are assessing kids on in the fall is not what they are being assessed on in the spring. That the goalpost, if you will, continues to move. If we expect kids, month after month, to be in school, we expect them to learn month to month. Now, if you take a look, we're below target in kindergarten, and then in our fall, winter, and spring. But you can see how we have moved students. The N of the students is listed under that. But even the movement demonstrates that we have growth to do. Basically, by second grade, the end of second grade, we are in the same spot we were last year. So how do we do in each individual grade level? And this is important, because we have had a major world pandemic and a major disruption of being out of school the last two years. We didn't close our doors this year. We did have some disruption in attendance of both educators and students. But this was the work that we wanted to focus on when we were in school. So if you take a look, the kindergartners at the end of last year as compared to the kindergartners at the end of this year. Alright. And who are these students? As we share the different student demographics in both ethnicity and race, as well as the student groups reported to the federal level. These are the federal-level reporting subgroups or student groups. And you can see that in every category, we did not meet from fall to spring the end goal. So these two are demonstrating, these two scores are from this year. In the fall, what we wanted students to know was at a lower level than when we finished. So the growth in their learning or the expectations for our students, which are the standards, increased over time from fall to spring. Basically, we're saying, if you spend a year with us, we should have a year of growth. And we're finding that we are not necessarily growing students. We are keeping students in the same learning levels, if you will, that they started. And our goal, and the board's mission of success for all students, that's what we're after. The colors below share the differences, if you will. We just took the target and divided it up to share blue, green, brown. And so those are, those, just so you know that, that will change over time as the new superintendent and the team set new goals for interim. Those will be adjusted each year. The reading proficiency next steps, those are the same. It's the same guideline, completed in progress next steps. This, you've seen again, it is basically the goals, what are students expected to do, what are the adults in the system expected to do, and what do we do about it? We learn, we do, we review, we learn, do, review. And we are majorly in a spot to really have critical conversations, not at this level. I mean, we can talk all we want, but unless the kinds of conversations about student monitoring data actually drill down into our classrooms, I don't see improvement happening. These need to be owned by all of us as all stakeholders in the district. So we completed a few more of the implementation stages of roles, responsibilities. The design is there. The beauty of this, although the data aren't where we want them to be, the student learning data and the learning that was expected, we certainly are set up for success. We have the resources. We know what to do. Now, we do them. So what are those action steps? Moving into next year, it's around the curriculum. Right now, and a couple of board members attended a reading symposium. Five years ago, ASD was ahead of the curve and adopted evidence-based reading curriculum. And we fought it ever since. There isn't really out there any more evidence that a balanced literacy approach is the way to teach reading. There is evidence and brain research that all children learn to read the same way. It is about the visual cortex of the brain, the auditory cortex of the brain, the part of the brain that puts those pieces together. And in fact, they have brain scans that demonstrate the difference in kids' understanding and reading literacy. They can see it in the white matter of their brain. If we fail to make connections with neurons between the parts of the brain when they're young, it is shown when they're older. So the idea of my kids learn differently because they did this, all kids learn by making those same things, whether it's English, UPIC, Spanish, all languages learn the same way of how to read, interestingly enough, great research. So those wars are over that we've experienced the last three years. Yes?
I didn't understand the phraseology, what you meant by it when you said, after the implementation of the new reading curriculum, we fought it since then.
Sure. So Mr. Donley, I don't know if you were here for some of those things, but this room was full after we implemented it. And it was a negotiations year, so that could have had a coincidence. Full of, I want to teach how I want to teach. I need academic freedom. This is not developmentally appropriate. It's too hard for children to learn.
So if by "we" that...
ASD, we have experienced it, yeah.
We have experienced reluctance to implement it.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to...
Yeah. And honestly, at that time, the research about balanced literacy not being evidenced, I mean, there were books about balanced literacy by the people who made balanced literacy. But from Yale University to Vanderbilt to Columbia, they've all, all taken those off the shelf and said, oops, this is actually incorrect. Brains, and that's why dyslexia is now being, I don't know, honored or identified more, because it actually is the auditory part of it. Kids aren't hearing it the same way. So it's just fascinating, I nerd out on it. But we are ready, that's the thing. I don't have a bad outlook, because we are absolutely ready with everything on this train to move forward. So curriculum implementation, we conducted implementation snapshots. And I want to let you know that when we first did them prior to the pandemic, the fall prior to the pandemic, which was 19 after the earthquake, we had about 35%. We did them again, and we're up to 45%, but this should be 100%, right? So we made some improvement, but amongst, in between pandemics and everything, we lost sight of where we need to go. So develop leadership structures. And that is not leadership as a formal leadership position. Leadership is everywhere in our buildings, from leadership in wing groups, leadership with a coach, leadership with a grade-level teacher who happens to be a fantastic reading teacher who understands this. The leadership structures is just to make those connections in schools, because teaching phonics and phonemic awareness and not just look around the page and comprehension, it's harder. It is hard work if you were not developed in university to teach this way. So I'm not saying this is easy. I'm just saying, we know what to do now, and we need to put all the resources we have to our teachers, because this is a monumental task for them. So build proficiency in K-2 daily phonics lessons, coach fundamental skills. Haggerty is actually a well-loved program by Pre-K All the Way Up and to build proficiency for kids. And then actually, some of our own look at our schools with our exceptional data guy, Dr. Aches. We are really looking at that wind time, how we're using it appropriately. Professional learning, data discussions, so that it doesn't seem like data is something that we do or that we cry about, we do anything, we go, oh, man, that's not right. What can we do to get to the next thing? And then we look, oh, look at this school and this classroom. What can we learn from them? And so we want to have data discussions that demystify that it's a bad thing, that actually, it's just where we are. And good leadership looks to the future. We don't dwell on the past. And then MTSS is multi-tiered system of support. I'm still an RTI fan, but I'll go with the MTSS. I'll get myself in the 21st century. So reading proficiency, these are our two interim goals where, that we want to get, that we've set for the future. We're at spring now, and they still look like big goals. But again, these are the growth goals for the kids who are behind. And the growth that you want is when, in these assessments, there's like, just to give an example, if I want a kid to do so many letter sounds or CVC words, consonant, vowel, consonant, breaking those sounds down, I want them to do, the normal growth might be 12 increase. If I want to make catch-up growth, I have to teach to where the child who's behind gets, we want it one and a half times. So then I want it at 18 words. That's what we mean by catch-up growth. When we say one and a half times, we throw that around. That's what we mean. But again, this isn't like, we're not asking a lot. These are things, letter sounds, folks. Letter sounds at kindergarten. That should not be a huge ask. That is our job. And again, the percentage of grade-two students below the 40th percentile, grade-two is a little bit trickier. That CBMR, the R stands for reading, and it's again, the curriculum-based measure. So guess what kids have to do? If it's part of the curriculum, they have to read actually a sentence. And so it gets harder at the end of first grade, yes. And again, prior to the standards changing back in 2011, the CVM was probably, it was, I think Mark did a study. It was about 18 months. They took 18 months and lowered it, because Alaska's standards were not rigorous enough. So when we rewrote our standards, we went from a D in standards to an A. Alaska has A standards, just so you know, that if we teach to our standards, our kids will do well in competing in the world. So fall to spring reading growth by grade level. And that is of the students who needed to make catch-up growth. So you see, the students tested in the fall, the students tested in the spring. What's the percent that you actually had a beginning score and an ending score? And so the students who did not have both assessments were taken out of this look. But look, it's 99, almost 100% of the kids. Which were the ones who tested both in the spring and fall? That's that 17. And then students that fell below the benchmark that made high growth, that made the one and a half times. So out of the 1,700, and there's a little cursor on there, I can't read that number, 190 or only 11% changed their learning trajectory. And in order for us to get the growth, we need more students to change their trajectory. And again, this isn't content learning in all subjects. I want to stress again, this is letter naming, letter sounds. Okay? When they hear letter sounds, the teacher or the assessor, there's no time on this. The teacher will say "cat", and the kids have to identify the sounds in "cat", the "k-a-t". And if they can do that, we know that they have their letter sounds. If they can't break up CVC words, they're going to struggle later on. Actually, the later on is fourth grade, where they have what they call the fourth-grade dip. And if you recall, when they had preschools and they said, oh, preschools are good, and when it was just experimental kind of preschools or, you know, experiential, by fourth grade, they had the slump. And the reason was, is that those preschools, and what they share, is that building vocabulary and prepping for reading should be essential in preschools. That the fourth-grade slump is when kids start to learn content, say in science, that have less pictures in the book. The cues that they learn to look at the pictures to guess the words don't work for you anymore. And they certainly don't work for you in an eighth-grade biology book. So that's why breaking down sounds and understanding language, decoding, must match vocabulary and comprehension. So fall to spring reading growth by ethnicity. None of these, in both the demographics or the student groups, did we see as having any outliers. They're all equally about the same percentage of moving out of the far below or making one and a half times growth. And this is the group of interest. Again, the board has asked different times about, could we look at others? We're just keeping it the same ones that we have to report federally. So this is additional information for the board to have. And at the highest level, we share the monitoring to ask questions. But I wanted to share operationally, what does this look like? And how do we use these data and understanding to do the work? And, you know, the deputy superintendent is in charge of the instructional piece. So here's a statement. Data don't actually answer questions. They actually pose us to ask more questions and new, different questions. And root causes are often multiple layers deep. It becomes the opportunity to investigate the why. And we've started using this. Dr. Stock has taught all of us about curriculum, instruction, assessment, implementation, and alignment. We want to know the CIAIA of what we're doing. And we don't just need to do it here. It doesn't make sense for us to do it here. Those are the things at the local context. If anyone wants to improve where they are today till tomorrow, we ask ourselves at our level about our own data. It isn't for me to tell anyone, this is your CIAIA. Those are discoverable by your own data. We have the expertise to support. But until the data are owned and the student learning of all our schools are owned directly by our schools and classrooms, our understanding of how to change it won't be there. And again, I just want to share, because this was really important. I know, remember Jacobs brought this up last time, to really clarify that the goalpost is moving. If I were to assess our kids on what we assessed them in the fall, they'd be great. But guess what? There's a year of learning that should have happened in between, too. It, every year for kids, is going to get harder and more rigorous. Schools are designed to help kids learn complex things. That's our jobs. So this gives you a little idea, so I'm going to walk you through it, because I wanted to drill down to you of the types of things that kids do in schools. And what are kids and, or teachers, rather. Now, we didn't, sharing at the district level at this detail per school, would I be, I have identifiable students. But because it's district level, I'm just going to show you, so that you have a mind's eye about what happens. And it brings us to like, this is what we got to do. This is our focus. So letter sounds, in the white side of the charts, in the winter, okay? When we tested, in the winter testing period in January, I believe, Dr. Aches? Yeah. In January, these were where our students' learning levels were. So in the winter, and it gives you the count, because an N is always important to know. So when we refer to N, that's just the number. So in the winter, for letter sounds at kindergarten, literally, what does the sound? There's 44 sounds in our thing. If you go to Spalding, they say there's 72, because the O-U-G-H has about eight of it in itself. But there's 44 major sounds, only 26 letters. So do you see? I mean, learning language and teaching reading by phonics and phonemic awareness is hard, so...
I have a question. We have, how many schools that teach Spalding? Like, five or six? Are those numbers, and we know that all of them are excellent.
Yeah, I will show you some data later.
Are those, is their data rolled into this data?
Yes.
So that distorts this from what's really happening in our non-Spalding classrooms?
No, I would say that there are some non-Spalding schools that are doing exceptionally well as well, yeah. So it just depends if we're teaching phonics and phonemic awareness well. It's not about Spalding. It's about learning letter sounds, learning letter segmentation. So this isn't about Spalding, it's about student learning. Do teachers who know Spalding have more tools? Yes. Is that operationally something that could be implemented district-wide when it's all about, when we have a turnover of teachers the way we do? No, it's not operationally. And people who struggle doing it leave schools that do Spalding. I mean, you can't keep up with that.
So I hear that. But at the same time, in the Spalding schools that are succeeding, the parents are learning the sounds. As a Spalding parent, I had to learn over 50 sounds to practice with my twins. And it was challenging. But all the parents are expected to do that and practice with your kids. It produces unquestionably great results. So we know it works. Why can't the teachers do that? If the parents are learning it in the Spalding schools, why can't our teachers do that?
I mean, our teachers do learn it, but Spalding takes that help at home. And if all parents had time to do what you did, maybe kids would be different. But not everybody has the availability. Some of our parents don't even speak English to know the English sounds. They actually have a different power. They can speak Spanish better, you know? So I'm not against Spalding. I was a Spalding principal. I was a Spalding parent, too. What I'm saying is that 32 years of experience implementing Spalding at the highest level that you need to do to make it work in a district this large without the buy-in is failure. And I've shared that over and over with you. Yeah, so we'll go on and...
Member Donley, can we continue? And then we'll come back around for questions.
But I love Spalding, just so you know. Those Spalding people out there, I'm telling you, I like it. But there are other issues around it. So, and one is the 10-days, two-week course needed to be an instructor of Spalding. I can give you a price tag on that. Every year. Yeah. That alone makes it very difficult for us. So winter, we had low-risk kids. I mean, they're right on target. They're on, where they are will probably lead to the next level of learning to the next level of learning. Some risk means, oh, that's in that yellow area, which means, yep, they're not where they need to be, but they're not high-risk or far below. And the goal, if you can think about it, is that you want to increase the green and decrease the red. Don't focus on the yellow, because you don't know in the yellow whether they move down or up, okay? And I joke, it's like purgatory. You just start... You just stay there forever. So, but that might not be a good joke. So what we want to do is don't think about the yellow. We don't want anyone in the yellow. We want them, well, the yellow is just a path to get to the green. But, but we don't want green to leave us, right? So, but what happened? So in the, for letter sounds for our kindergarteners, by the spring, 755 stayed in the low risk. Of that 1026, 255 now are at some risk and 16 are now really far behind. So they, from the winter to the spring, they moved in the wrong direction. So the kids that started in the yellow, look at that. We got 405 out of them into the low risk. But then we lost 120 of them the other way. Okay? And so that's how you read this chart. Of the 620 kids that were super high risk that we know, or 862 that are high risk that we know rut row, these kids really need letter sounds. We were able to move 269 of them to some risk and 73 are now, we're not worried about them because they're on target. But 520 are still there at the end of the year. And these kids are going to first grade without letter sounds. Like this is critical. This is really serious stuff. Word segmenting is what I said, like when they say map or cat. The kids have to hear each sound and break it up. And that's letter segmenting. And it's literally consonant, vowel, consonant. It's not on a monopiea. It is cat, hat, map, just so they can pull those out. And you see the same thing, you can read it the same way. We kept 1,052 in that area, but we moved others. Some at, so some risk were 989. We moved 446. We kept 446, but 434, we want to move that way, but 434 are now at some risk. Still, so we moved some out and then 109 moved down to high risk. So in high risk, we started with 619 of our babies who could not do word segmenting. 324 still cannot. And then nonsense words is, it's, some people don't like this because they think it teaches kids to not know words. But what it is to trick, like some kids just memorize things. And they're nonsense words because they are just sounds put together in a CVC pattern, but they don't have any meaning to them. And so we have a lot of word callers that kids have memorized words. And so they can just say them. But when you do nonsense words, you, you find kids that are just memorizers because they don't know the independent sounds of the letters to make those words. So 1157, 891 stayed. We lost 249 plus again, lost 17. So this is just for you to review and to kind of see how it worked. But it becomes more critical as kids get older. I'm going to show you. Here is now in first grade, very similar. Who were the kids in word segmenting now? Do you see in first grade, they're not even assessing letter sounds? Because letter sounds are supposed to be 100% of kids. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a like, here's the line, can they do their letter sounds? Most kids come to school saying their letters because they know the ABC song. The putting sounds with them is tricky. Especially if they're not hearing those sounds at their home. Okay, so 1250, the same thing. Of the 562 in some risk, we kept 164 at some risk. We moved 334 out, but 64 went the other way. So as you read through this, that's the reason why you don't focus on the yellow because you don't know where you're, where they're going. Nonsense words again, very important to find who the word callers, memorizers are. And 898 stayed at a low risk. But 24 of those kids that were low risk in the winter now are high risk for us. And then the CBMR, again, that is end of first grade. That used to be a second grade expectation. And now when the standards change, that's a first grade expectation. They have, they're reading. And you can see the winter count of the kids that were in low risk, some risk, high risk. And of the 921, look now at the number that remain high risk because the stakes are getting higher. We're not talking about letter sounds or sounds in word segmenting. We're talking about reading. And now those 683 babies are moving on to grade two, which is the next. You will see on this chart, and you'll see it again. We went ahead and assessed the third graders like we did second graders just because of the disruptions with COVID. And you'll see in that high risk category, both in second, if we can go back, and in third. Once they hit that high risk with CBMRs in reading, where they actually have to read a sentence, we're not moving them because it's so hard. And guess what? These kids leave third grade, go into fourth grade. And everything about fourth grade and up is about reading to learn. They learn by reading. And so if they don't read, we're struggling. And I've beat this drum for a long time and over 10 years. And it's so important. So I'm thanking this board for having the courage to have such a lofty goal because it is so important. So I thank you for that. We will get there. We know what to do. But we have to understand that these are true little kids. And a child who hasn't learned how to read, who likes reading, doesn't exist. So if our goal is to say, I want kids to love reading, our first work is to teach them how to read. So moving on, sometimes we're like, well, it was about data and attendance. And we have struggled with attendance this year, adults, students. I'm the first one to say to the board, like, oh, my gosh, we're just trying to keep our doors open. I've said that many a times. I spent seven weeks every Friday in a school. I was teaching. Your superintendent was teaching a class to keep the doors open. People that were a reading coach to work on this, they were covering a classroom. So while the curriculum and what to do was there, we weren't all aligned this year in moving forward. And that's what I know, that having everything aligned and moving forward is going to help us. But even with these data, attendance daily rate, it's by percentage. 100% is 100%. Look at where the cluster is. There wasn't a difference in attendance. You could have 86 attendance rate and you're either doing really well or doing really poorly. And then we go to, well, it's got to be about SES and what kids come with. And maybe how we're spending money on children. And this is the next. And this is what member lessons and our board president went to a very similar intro. And thank you for allowing me to do my fellowship. I got entered, I had like a couple of days of edunomics at my fellowship at Yale. And this is just a brief introduction of how we're working with all of us to really have our eyes wide open as we move forward. This is second grade fast bridge increase. Like, did they increase in their learning? So it's not even looking at benchmark, like what did they get? It's like, did they increase in the learning? The mean of the expected increase is zero. Okay, so the mean increase is at zero. That is the district wide increase is at that, that line right there. So those that made it above and increased more than other schools are above that zero on the left hand. And schools that were below the mean increase are below the line. The colored circles are by socioeconomic status. If you think green of money, that will help you. And the size of the circle is, well, actually the size of the circle about the same, but they will have those being the student counts. But if you look on the bottom, that's all money. So that's grant money, title money, all money that's going into that school. What we did is the simple statistics, Jim and his team took how much money goes to this school? How much, how many students do they have? Simple statistics, it's just a division problem. Now, we understand that there's different programs, different this, different that. But even in those programs, when we hire adults, we expect things to be done. So with that, you do see outliers. We do know that reading achievement is possible. Look at our yellows and our reds. Even those that were spending $26,000 a student. We want to talk about what are we doing in those schools? But actually, the learning isn't changing or the value of the return on the value of that investment. Those are the types of discussions we're getting into because if it's important for us to have readers by third grade, how we're implementing our programs must matter to us. And what we're doing every day of every minute must matter. And this is just another way to look at it. Because I started with the data, we'll just ask you more data. We'll, we'll come up with, well, maybe it's because of attendance. Maybe it's because of, we're not spending enough money. Maybe it's because of this. And we have data to answer those. But again, it's not for me to say, I think you as the outgoing superintendent, blah. If you don't own it, and I was an elementary principal that like loved this stuff and gendered ownership of it by teachers. And when they see it and understand it, that's the beauty of student learning. When they see and understand, that's what we need to do is to share this knowledge, grow our teachers, level up and have them really see the value that they add because this is about our teachers and them. It shouldn't be about administrators. It should be about supporting teachers. They are where the value is added in the classroom. Not at my level. The value is in the classroom with our teachers. So we can have more. This was not really for dissemination, all of those circles, just because we shrunk it, the names went off and stuff. But we are going to have this for the board to have, to access as you begin to answer those questions and ask those questions as well. And I'm just going to end because I have the luxury and this might just be my last time. And it reminds me, this whole thing of, you might've heard the parable of the river. And one day, a group of villagers, they were working in the fields of a river. And suddenly someone noticed a baby floating downstream. A woman rushed out and rescued the baby, brought it to shore and cared for it. During the next several days, more babies were found floating downstream and the villagers rescued them as well. But before long, there was a steady stream of babies floating down the river. Soon, the whole village was involved in the many tasks of the rescue work, pulling these poor children out of the stream, ensuring that they were properly fed and clothed and housed, and integrating them into the life of the village. While not all the babies were saved, now very numerous, some could be saved, but not all. The villagers felt they were doing well to save as many as they did. But before long, the village became exhausted with all this work. Some villagers suggested they go upstream to discover how all these babies were getting in the river in the first place. Had a mysterious illness stricken them? Had the shoreline been made unsafe by an earthquake? Was some hateful person doing it deliberately? A huge controversy erupted in the village. And one group argued that every possible hand was needed to save the babies since they were barely keeping up with the current flow. The other group argued that if they found out how these babies were getting into the water in the first place, they could repair the situation up there and that would save all the babies and eliminate the need for those costly rescue operations downstream. "Don't you see?" cried some. "If we find out how they're getting in the river, we can stop the problem and no babies will drown. By going upstream, we can eliminate the cause of the problem." "But it's too easy," said the village elders. "It might fail. It's not for us to change the system. And besides, how will we occupy ourselves if we no longer did this?" ASD has the resources. Our teachers are phenomenal. We can go upstream with everything we know and the resources there. And we can save the babies before grade three. I promise you. I'm excited about the future. Thank you.
So am I. Thank you. This is really exciting. And I mean, I just, I just know we're on the right track. I think we are on the trajectory for our kids to be reading by grade three. And we got to study the course. Anyway, questions from board members? Member lessons?
This is, I'll try to phrase this the way I want it to come out. We're making an investment in summer school. There's a magnitude of, I don't know if loss is the right word or staticness. Does the investment that we will be making in summer school and our anticipated sort of participation in it? Is that going to align? I mean, is the, is the expected return on investment of summer school sizable enough? Does, does, does it align with the magnitude of the situation that we're in? Did that come out the way that I wanted?
Sure, that's a great question. And with the capacity of what we can do, it's appropriate. Like, we don't have, it's really not about the money at this point, that investment. It's really about the human capital to be able to do it. And so, and I have during my updates, some, some news and some papers about what we're going to do in summer school, about 7,000 kids district wide. And I think about 4,000 of those are very seriously in the, the reading. Yeah. Yeah. And at this point, I would say we, summer school is just pulling some more babies out of the river. That if we go back to not carrying to the next level, to the next level. Because all of these, like matriculation in school is building on prior skills. I mean, if you take anything banned, playing basketball, they are all discrete skills that build into fluid skills that build into like this beautiful game or whatever. So it is a right investment for me. It's as big as we could get it because we don't have the cap, human capital to do more. And the payoff will be when the kids who make up that growth a little bit in the summer of discrete skills, when they go back into school, if those are continued to be supported, then they'll get it. I mean, I'll share some articles that the really, 95% of kids cognitively can, can learn to read. And over 50% of kids absolutely need the progression of very explicit teaching. Struggle with independent skills later on, spelling, breaking down multi-syllabic words, finding the core, which is something Spalding really does. Like they literally teach you like prefix, suffix. Like you can figure out what a word means when you, when learned that deeply. So that's a great question. And I, and I think it's well worth it for the capital, human capital we have of our educators. But the, the key to success is going to be the continuation of building capacity. And, and I just want to stress so much, it's not easy. Just because we all know how to read, doesn't mean we can all teach reading. It, it really is hard for educators, especially to teach the toughest kids because you're trying to figure out what part aren't they getting? Is it the discrete sound? Is it the CVC? Are they mixing things up? Is it easy blends with an R? Or is it, I mean, they, it's like rocket science. Yeah.
Dr. Bishop, at the school level, when teachers, teachers get this data, they, they can actually identify the kids by name and what they need.
They can identify the kids' need by at-risk. And then there's other steps to determine where is the disconnect. And then what we do in win time is say, this win for this six weeks is going to be on this particular deliberate skill so that they can catch up and get the skill. We're making some investments in some at-home things like, you know, Mr. Donnelly, he is right. When kids practice at home too, and the whole family's talking about it, things happen. And there's a program now that can track kids at home. And we can then offer, you know, incentives. And it's actually kids work with an avatar that they like. And so it's kind of engaging. It's pretty interesting. And it has some very powerful outcomes for engagement of kids to actually do it 10, 15 minutes a day. That's all it takes at home. So they can, this year, just a delight. I received a couple. I received a couple of emails after Dr. Aix went on the road show and was invited in by principals, and then they used him to share this. I mean, we don't, he can't be multiplied to however many classrooms we have. But we're starting the excitement. And at Lake Otis is actually where they started it. And then all these things came in for teachers asking him, can you show me this? And then he would show them something and then have a conversation with them. And I was able to be CC'd on some of these from the teachers. And they were so excited about the learning and about seeing it a different way and the successes. So, I mean, that's the power of discussion at the school level. And that, that is, that doesn't make it a top-down thing. That makes it a bottom-up, that we understand what our kids are. But then when we identify something, district has to be there with the coaching and the learning and the materials at hand to help.
Absolutely. Other questions from board members? Member Jacobs? And I'd like the record to show, Member Higgins has joined us online.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Dr. Bishop, at the school level, are we collecting data as well as their logging that's going on as to students' progress in between assessments? If I understand right, with the data we're looking at for risk is based off of the assessments themselves? But is there other data we're collecting in between those assessments?
Yes. And in special classes, it is just called progress monitoring that a teacher does. We don't log it in here, but it's at the teacher level where they can do those same assessments weekly. And part of the win group, to determine if your win is working over the six or eight weeks, is to every two weeks, do one of these little mini-assessments. And again, they're like a minute long. And you, you know, you test the kids, like, pull them up, like, let's see if I can do it. So yes, not in the kids that are at, on. Generally, for capacity right now, I think it's probably the high-risk only. Yeah, the high-risk kids. So every two weeks, because it's that theory of action that I'm going to do something, I'm going to get the data, I'm going to see if it worked. If it didn't work, I'm going to figure out something else. And again, it's, some kids, it is about hearing of it. Some kids just need to learn the letters because they know a different language. And so the sounds in English are different. I mean, there's a million different reasons why. And identifying it, that one little thing is, then you practice it, and then kids get it because they're such discrete skills that they can be learned. Like, a kid learns the scales, you know, for music, or how to dribble and shoot. You can separate those skills, teach them, and then get back into the game.
Madam President? Thank you very much. Dr. Bishop, do we have any sense as to what level of fidelity we have with collecting that data right now for the students? And or is it a case of, we mentioned reading coaches being pulled in different directions this year as some of the same challenges with progress monitoring?
That's a great question. And I would probably liken it to about the 45% of full implementation that we're seeing. Yeah, probably less than 50%. Yeah. And I don't want to make excuses. I mean, it was tough this year. And we were covering classes, we were moving around. But this is our work. And so, again, good leadership doesn't lament on the past. We say, we know what we need to do, and we're moving forward.
Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I want to follow up on that issue because after five years, I think I understand your report, we're at 45% of our classrooms are implementing the reading curriculum with fidelity. And you previously reported that there's a clear correlation to the success of these classrooms on their implementation of the current reading curriculum. So what specific strategies are we going to utilize to get more of our instructors to begin to implement the existing reading curriculum with fidelity?
Yeah, and that was good. And at a district this large, just so you know, it is difficult. I'm not going to say this is an easy task, just to ask. And, I mean, we can liken it to what happens in the boardroom, that we have rules and codes of conduct. And, you know, not everybody chooses to do something on a certain day or not. So whatever happens here, whatever happens with me, it is, it is not just classrooms. It is our ability to mean what we say and do what we say. But if you go back to the implementation, two key things that really are needed to this point are, there you go, implementation snapshots, fall and winter. And we're going to report those back. We're going to develop the leadership structures for integrity checks and providing feedback. And that is what I think Mr. Jacobs touched on. In between the big things, what are we doing in between to get back on? And those are those building-level, teacher-to-teacher accountability to say, hey, because really, we're all in this together. If the kindergartners get through at that 600 level, 600 kids who don't, those 600 kids are now going to first grade, and the first grade teacher is going to be like, ah. So we are all interconnected in the system of matriculation. And so taking responsibility at my level for my kids to teach them what they need for the next level and the next level. And that really group, group thinking of, we're going to do this together at a school, is built around that leadership development of accountability. Not, this is my classroom, I shut my door, and I can do what I want because I'm an independent contractor. Actually, we're all connected because all of these kids need to move through our school system. So the curriculum implementation is a major part of it. And building capacity around that. And truly, I think all the coaches, to Member Jacobs' point, were teaching all year. So not involved in that. But that's more than just the coaches. That could be your lead third-grade teacher. That could be your lead kindergarten, that could be your teacher in charge to say, hey, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing?
Member Jacobs? Oh, let's see if there's a hand, no hand. Go on.
Just a follow-up question to something that Member Donnelly said. This might not fit neatly in the interim goals specifically. But did the administration consider putting an interim goal related to implementation percent?
I'd have to ask, we didn't consider it, but it could be considered moving forward. That would be, that would be something. Yeah. And we have some of our reading experts and people that designed the summer school and all that stuff sitting right there. Thank you, folks. They're the support team to schools. And again, the work, though, is at the schools. Yeah. That's a good thought. We can take that back.
And because it is, it's urgent work. I mean, we are at a point now where, you know, we need to poop or get off the can, right? We do.
Madam President, I ask a question specifically because we know, we know, and we've discussed repeatedly that our goals, interim and otherwise, reflect what are priorities. And so if implementation, as it sounds like, is a priority, documenting that seems to be a wise move.
Absolutely. Yes, we have a few more minutes. Member Lessons?
Maybe. I'm looking at the implementation stages chart, and I'm reflecting on a question I received recently from an educator, what was her remark really? Who shared that they didn't think that there were very many opportunities for skill development in professional development days. There's a lot of like curricular content. You know, this is how you teach the new math. This is how you teach the new, you know, whatever. I guess, is that a fair statement? I mean, are there opportunities for educators to really master new skills? So, you know, if an educator received his or her degree in a whole language, you know, a decade or two ago, or five years ago, whenever, and now they want to have better word segmentation skills, when do they get a chance to develop that skill set?
That's a great question. When we initially adopted the curriculum, we have what's called Series A and Series B. And one, and it is, Series A is the phonics phonemic awareness. They're courses, they're classes that they can earn credit for. And we had had it mandatory initially when we started doing this work. And then the second part is more about comprehension. And that's really hard, too, just so you know. Like, pulling pieces of comprehension, there are skills based in that. And we had done that, and I could let folks come up. That was disrupted. And really, what I, what, you know, the feedback that I got back was, you're trying to teach us, this is literally what a principal said, "My staff thinks that you are teaching us title skills." I said, well, what do you mean by title skills? Well, this is the stuff title schools do. And I said, no, this is actually really solid reading, teaching of reading and how to do it. And but the idea behind science of reading, stuff like Spalding, or, you know, we have several schools that do very descriptive, was like, that's for title kids. But I'm like, well, actually, no, it's like, it's used anywhere you use this, kids generally do well. So we do, during the pandemic, I would say, and I'm not sure how many took A and B, but it's still available, so we can regain that. Yeah, yeah. But we have, they designed courses to actually, for credit and badging, for teachers to gain those skills. Probably about fall of 19 was our biggest group because we wanted all teachers in K2 to go through them. And so we paid for them to come, either do them on their own or come and do them together. And it was difficult. It was, it was difficult to require that. Would that be a fair statement? Yeah. So the, yeah, yeah.
And that includes new to the district teachers?
Oh, and good news, new to the district teachers. There's actually four days of training that we're going to onboard people on these types of things before they go to classrooms now. And so we're working on that so we know how to do our new teachers. And our teachers that are already in service, that's part of this too, to say, like, what part do I need? But, you know, I would really say that when, when things get tough, we like stasis, we like to go back to where this, it's comfortable, what we know. Because the idea that I've been teaching, like, literally, I mean, 32 years I've been in this. And then to say, well, actually, what you learned and what you did isn't getting the changes. I mean, it hurts because people get into this job, they love children, they want children to succeed. So I always try to say, we finally identified the right work. It wasn't that people weren't working hard. It wasn't that we weren't doing really good things. It's just that for the learner that we have today, the right work is this. So let's get this right work done. And really, our curriculum is designed to be implemented four out of five days. You know, four out of five days, if we stay on this, you know, it's not daily things. But if four out of five days, you continue to move on through your, you know, reading, you know, trajectory, and one day out of five, you could do whatever you wanted, kids are still going to learn. I mean, that's how it's billed, curriculum. And it's called the guaranteed and viable curriculum, right? We can guarantee kids will get this, and it is actually viable to do. Our curriculum is guaranteed and viable if we implement it.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. This was just, I just keep learning more and more. I mean, and I thought I knew, I know every, if it's really quick, Kelly, okay.
I wanted to say thank you. Okay, I just want to say thank you to you and staff who are involved in, especially this particular slide, the fast bridge increase versus per people expenditures. It's a different look than just looking at outcomes because that increase in growth, there's more, there's a lot of hope in here and insight. And so, thank you.
Absolutely. And we've got a little taste of that at the, at the Tom Hunter as well, in that edonomics?
Edonomics, yeah. And I just want to say thank you, so to the board, for the investment in evidence-based, research-based reading curriculum, investment in your teachers, having a goal. Like, the planets are aligned. You should be really excited about moving into the future. We just need to make sure that there's no more variants that take us offline. But our teachers are eager and excited. When they learn about this, they're just as excited as I am. They truly are. And that's what we're going to empower them because they want kids to learn. So it's fun. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Madam President, I will enter executive session for the purpose of uncontested student hearings, legal updates, and negotiations. Second?
Moved in second. Any opposition?